As a premier community in Hampton Roads, James City County strives to maintain a high quality of life for all citizens through sound fiscal management and legislative actions. In an ongoing effort to increase transparency, your Board of Supervisors holds public meetings to garner citizen input before making important decisions. Here's tonight's meeting agenda. We call this meeting of the James City County Board of Supervisors to order for a regular meeting. Mr. Stevens, just call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Eisenhower?
Here.
Mr. Eisenhower represents the Jamestown District. Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Mr. Hippel represents the Powhatan District. Ms. Sadler?
Here.
Ms. Sadler represents the Stunhouse District and is Vice Chair of the Board. Mr. McGlinnan?
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan represents the Roberts District and is Chair of the Board. Sitting to my far left is Adam Kinsman, County Attorney, and I'm Scott Stevens, County Administrator, and it's my pleasure to be clerk to the Board.
We'll need a motion to allow Ms. Larson to participate electronically due to a family matter that prevents her from attending in person.
Motion.
We have a motion to approve. Mr. Stevens, please call the roll.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Sadler, welcome, Ms. Sadler, Ms. Larson.
You're used to saying my name.
Ms. Larson, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you very much.
All right, we start our meetings with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and today, we're really fortunate to have a very special guest with us, Ms. Amelia Purce, and she is a resident of the Jamestown District, so I'll turn things over to Ms. Eisenhower to introduce Amelia.
Okay, Amelia Purce is age seven, turning eight on July 31st, and she is a, attends Matthew Whaley Elementary School, is a rising third grader. She lives in the Meadows with her parents, Lindsey and Jason Purce, and sibling Calvin, age three, back in the back of the room, and she loves reading, particularly Babysitter's Club, Rainbow Magic, The Jewel Fairies, and Unicorn Academy books. She enjoys swimming with the Williamsburg Manta Rays and Coast Guard Blue Dolphins, and she's regular in the rec connect program, the summer reading program, and day camp with the 4H, and after a moment of silence, if you will, please, Amelia, you can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amelia, if you want to hang on there for just a minute, I will come out and we will give you.
Can we maybe have the board come out and join?
Come on.
I'm sure we want to, Dad wants to get a picture. Well.
That needs to be in the picture.
No, 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 I'm usually the photographer, it's okay. Just go on up and stand right up front there. That's fine. We have now an opportunity for public comment, do we have any cards? Yes, sir. Thank you. Just this one? And, oh, I would ask Ms. Peg Borman to step forward for public comment.
Good afternoon, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Kinsman, Mr. Purce, and ladies and gentlemen, I'm Peg Borman, I reside at 17 Settlers Lane in downtown Lightfoot, and I'm Chairman of the Clean County Commission, and I'm here to talk trash, as usual. And trash is a good portion of our lives, whether we like it or not, but it doesn't have to be the major component, although some people think that it does take my priority, but I do have a life other than trash, but anyway, but how do you feel like about trash? And how do you feel like roadside litter? Does it make you feel good to see it out there? Does it make you feel your heart hurt a little bit because it's trashing up our beautiful county? It angers me, I don't expect somebody else to pick it up, but sometimes I have to. Do you pick it up when it's possible? Maybe we expect volunteers to pick it up, or we expect the county to pay to have it picked up, but that's not what it should be. We should all take responsibility for it, because unlike a lot of people that don't care, and some people care, but they just say, oh, well, let somebody else do it. But I want, and I hate it when somebody places blame being, if I've done something, then I like to own up to it, and most people that throws out trash doesn't own up to it, and they, they don't realize that because we're not persecuting or prosecuting, I don't, whatever it is, for the cigarette that goes out the window, I mean, out the window, and we don't have, judges just don't take on some of these cases, or so people are lackadaisical about even complaining about it. So, we gotta, we gotta be adults, and we need to be accountable for our actions, and I wish that more people would get involved, and the Commission just hosted a volunteer appreciation picnic honoring Will Barnes a couple of weeks ago, and we had about 60 people that showed up that have been out volunteering to take care of these problems that we've got throughout the year. But I want to, I'll talk a little bit now about the annual expo, litter and recycling expo is in November, and the day recycle, American recycle day is November 15th, and we're going to hold that again at War Hill, and we're also going to have the repair and fix it event, so it'll be on the Saturday around the 15th, and I don't know what the date is right now, but anyway, just made a note of it and plan on coming out and being with us that day. But meanwhile, we've got two new commissioners, which I'm happy to say, that one of them is from Jamestown, but I'm sorry, Mr. Hippel, but we still don't have anybody from Powhatan, and I've been working hard to, and I know you have too, but, so I'm not going to give you any bad remarks on that, but I hope that we will get somebody else that will come in from Powhatan, and I'm working on one from Roberts right now, so with everybody's help, we can get more commissioners, and meanwhile, don't be afraid to go and pick up that litter when you can, and you can volunteer as a commissioner on our Clean County Commission, or one of the other many opportunities that the Commission offers, and you can call 757-259-9375, and the young lady that answers the phone there, Regina, she'll be glad to hook you up with some kind of a volunteer position, or give you some kind of idea of what you can help us with. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Borman, for everything you do for us, and I know you'll have your toes and fingers crossed and offer up a little prayer for no rain in November.
Amen. Thank you.
All right, that's our public comment. We'll now move on to a matter that we're moving on the agenda with the Board's acquiescence to approve a proclamation to declare the week of July 17th to 23rd pretrial probation and parole supervision week in James City County. We have a proclamation, whereas Community Corrections are an essential part of the justice system, and whereas Community Correction professionals uphold the law with dignity while recognizing the right of the public to be safeguarded from criminal activity, and whereas Community Corrections professionals are trained professionals who provide services and referrals for offenders, and whereas Community Corrections professionals work in partnership with community agencies and groups to promote prevention, intervention, and advocacy, and whereas Community Corrections professionals provide services, support, and protection for, and whereas Community Corrections professionals advocate for community and restorative justice, and whereas Community Corrections professionals are true force for positive change in their communities, now therefore be it resolved, that as Chairman of the Board of Supervisors, I do hereby proclaim July 17th, 23rd, 2022 as pretrial probation and parole supervision week in James City County, and encourage the community to recognize and honor the men and women of Colonial Community Corrections for their tireless work in improving the lives of our citizens and keeping our communities safe, and then we fix that proclamation. So, with that, I'll ask that we call the roll for the adoption of the proclamation.
Chairman, I think this is for recognition for the Board to be aware of it and to ask the Howland Representatives here to come forward and accept the proclamation. I really just want to, first of all, thank you guys for that, and I want to recognize my staff, they do tireless work, they see people every day that they have to try to help through bad situations that they are in life, they take this stuff home with them, unfortunately, sometimes, it's a very difficult job, Community Corrections, come on up, Amy, Assistant Director Amy, and they need to be recognized, it's an under-the-radar type position, and they really do help keep the communities safe and help people turn the corner when they're going through difficult times in life, so I want to thank the staff publicly for that, so thank you.
Got one more person in the picture. I'm sure Mr. Diggsel can convey our appreciation to all the other members of the staff as well, okay. We have no consent calendar this evening, so we'll move on to public hearings, and I want to recognize that Barbara Knell is here tonight representing the Planning Commission, thank you for coming tonight to represent your fellow members of the PC. Our first S U P is S U P 220004, 4451 Long Hill Road, Life Church Daycare S U P Amendment. Terry Costello.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. Ms. Carla Javier of Child Development Resources, also known as C D R, has applied to amend a previously approved special use permit for a daycare located at 4451 Long Hill Road. This is the current location of Life Church. The property is zoned R8 rural residential and designated low-density residential and is located inside the primary service area. Surrounding development include Windsor Forest, Seasons Trace, and Lafayette High School. The Christian Life Center, known as Life Church, has occupied this facility since March 2000. In March 2020, a special use permit was approved for the church to bring it into conformance with the zoning ordinance and for a daycare for up to 30 children. Due to COVID and other issues, the program never began. In lieu of the church operating a daycare program, the Head Start Program operated by C D R will be moving into this location. Currently, this program is operating at Lafayette High School, which is located at 4460 Long Hill Road. C D R is proposing to have a maximum of 32 children with the operating hours of 7:00 to 5:00 p.m. This S U P before you tonight will amend the previous one approved in 2020. The changes are increasing the maximum number of children from 30 to 32, expanding the hours to 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., where previously the hours were 8:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m., and adding a condition that mitigates noise since there's an outdoor play area proposed with this application. Staff finds this proposal to be compatible with surrounding development and consistent with the 2045 comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance, and recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve this application subject to the proposed conditions. At its June 1st, 2022 regular meeting, the Planning Commission voted 7 to 0 to recommend approval of the S U P subject to the proposed conditions. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time, and the applicant is also available.
Thank you, Ms. Costello. Before we do that, let's ask for a report on the Planning Commission's actions on this.
Ms. Knell's not here.
It's not Barbara.
Ms. Knell had a conflict, and so we did a last-minute switch, but it's my pleasure to be here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Haldeman.
I don't have much to add to Ms. Costello's remarks. The Planning Commission met on June 1st to consider this application, which was very similar to one we approved in March of 2020. There was no discussion, there was no public comment, there were no questions, and the Commission unanimously recommends approval.
Thank you very much. Anybody have questions for staff? Ms. Larson?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
Let me go ahead and open the public hearing, and ask if there are any speaker cards, anyone to speak on this matter, so I'll close the public hearing and ask for the Board's direction.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the S U P. Mr. Stevens, just call the roll, please.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Our second public hearing is for S U P 220003, 7683 Richmond Road, kettle corn food processing and storage. Ms. Costello again?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. Mr. David Tufti, property and business owner, has applied for a special use permit on behalf of Uncle Dave's Kettle Corn to change the existing contractor's office and warehouse use at 7683 Richmond Road to allow the use of the property for food processing and storage. The property is zoned A1 general agricultural, designated low-density residential, and located inside the primary service area. This property consists of approximately 1.95 acres with 5,360 square feet of building space. Inside the building is divided by use of the following categories: administrative purpose, storage of inventory, repair and restoration of kennels, and finally, to process, package, and distribute kettle corn and pork rinds. Previously, the warehouse space was used to hold contractor trucks and equipment. Staff has provided conditions to reduce impacts to the adjacent residential properties. These conditions include limitation on hours of operation, prohibiting outdoor storage, screening all dumpster and HVAC units, and limiting the preparation, heating, or processing of kettle corn and pork rinds to a fully enclosed building utilizing an activated carbon filtration system. At its June 1st meeting, the Planning Commission voted 7 to 0 to recommend approval of the S U P request to the Board of Supervisors subject to the proposed conditions. Staff finds this proposal to be compatible with surrounding development and consistent with the James City County 2045 comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance, and recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve this application subject to the proposed conditions. Thank you for your time this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. In addition, the applicant is also available. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Costello. Mr. Haldeman, anything to add from the Planning Commission?
Well, again, no residents spoke during the public comment period on this application. There were several questions from the commissioners, and it was determined that, excuse me, there would be no change in the footprint of the building, there was no response to the county's outreach to neighbors, no negative response or any response at all. The building would be insulated to mute noise from the operation, activated carbon filters would be used to mute the minor odor from the operation, and one commissioner mentioned that he was pleased to support a successful local business that's expanding. It's really about the notch, none of it, and we did unanimously recommend approval.
Very agreeable group.
You are.
All right, anybody have questions for staff before we open the public hearing? None? Open the public hearing. We have one card, David Tufti, the applicant. Tufti, welcome.
I'm David Tufti, I own Uncle Dave's Kettle Corn, and I just thought I'd see if anybody-
Would you mind just indicating your address for the record?
I'm sorry?
Would you mind just indicating your address for the record?
7683 Richmond Road, Williamsburg, Virginia. And I just thought I'd see if anybody had any questions about what we're proposing to do.
I think normally we would just ask if you have anything you'd like to add, and then if people do have questions, we would be happy to entertain them.
All right, well, what I would add simply is that we've been blessed, okay? This is only to do supplemental kettle corn orders, everything we make is at the premium outlets currently. Every once in a while, we get a big order, like from the hospitals in Richmond, they'll order 3,000 at a time as a employee appreciation day, and when they do that, to make it at the premium outlets, and we service 207 11 stores, and keep up inventory, and service our customers. and service our customers, makes it kind of difficult. So we do not intend to sell anything at the Richmond location where we, you know, are proposing to do this. It's simply to do the overload of orders that we get, which is only maybe once a month. And that's the whole reason for this. And it was a perfect space to do this.
I've got something I want to add as well. I know Dave has been in the community a long time, running several businesses, and has been very successful. And this, I think, will be a great component for what we're looking for in James City County to promote that. The only thing, when you-
Let me go ahead and close the public hearing.
Okay, go ahead.
Just close the public hearing.
Thank you. And the only, you know, when you ride down Rose Shambau, you get to smell Pierce's barbecue cooking, and it's really, to me, a unique smell.
It's a good smell.
And I was hoping that we'd be able to smell the popcorn as it went down Richmond Road. Maybe you won't smell it as much. So when I heard that, I was like, oh, come on, I want to smell the popcorn. But I'll support this when you're ready for it.
I'd just like to add that I'm happy to support as well. You're a blessing to the community. You've been an outstanding business owner, and I can say that your popcorn probably ranks right up there with my grandson. So we keep it, our pantry, well-stocked with what you offer. So thank you very much for all that you contribute.
Anybody else have any comments or questions before we move on? Ms. Larson?
I'm good. I love Uncle Dave's Kettle Corn as well.
With that, look for a motion.
Motion for approval?
Everybody's jumping in to see if they can get a free bag of popcorn out of there.
Can't do that. Can't do that. I don't know.
Mr. Stevens, would you call the roll, please?
Sir, Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinn?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll move on to item number three on our public hearings, the resolution for Powhatan Terrace Development. And Ms. Watson?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Housing Partnership, Inc., H P I, is planning to construct a low-income housing development at 1676 and 1678 Jamestown Road in James City County with 36 units to be known as Powhatan Terrace. As part of the application to receive tax credits, H P I has proposed to accept five project-based vouchers to reduce the cost burden on qualified households. The Designated Public Housing Agency responsible for the operation of Section 8 Housing Choice voucher program within James City County, the James City County Housing, the Office of Housing, does not currently have the ability to provide project-based vouchers. As such, H P I desires to obtain housing vouchers from the Hampton Redevelopment and Housing Authority for the use in the Powhatan Terrace Development. Section 3623 of the Code of Virginia 1950, as amended, requires that the Board of Supervisors of James City County hold a public hearing and adopt resolution declaring the need for the authority to exercise its powers in James City County. Every effort will be made to encourage the authority and housing partnerships to give priority use of the housing vouchers to James City County residents and/or to those who work in James City County. In talking with the developer, these project-based vouchers are required to retain the low-income housing tax credits for this project. Staff's recommendation is that the Board of Supervisors adopt the attached resolution to authorize acceptance of these vouchers. Be happy to entertain questions, and I'd also like to point out that the chairman of the Housing Partnerships Board is here.
Anybody have any questions for staff? I had two quick questions, if I might, Ms. Watson. First is simply, will we, in the future, be able to receive such vouchers as a county agency?
Talking about project-based vouchers? There is the possibility. We currently have 154 vouchers. Of those, 142 are leased up, and then we have 11 people who have just been issued vouchers and are looking for apartments or looking for housing. We are proposing that we ask HUD for some additional vouchers, and that would allow us then to identify project-based vouchers so that we could have our own. So yes, that is planned for the future.
And just to alert the board to the fact that I noticed that in the staff memo and in the resolution, although in your presentation, you did make this clear, that there was no number specified. And so I'm going to propose an amendment to this to indicate no more than five vouchers would be accepted under this program. So with that-
Questions? Ms. Watson, is there any way we can guarantee that it'll be for the citizens of James City County? I'm sure we probably can't. There's probably some law that says it's discrimination of other communities or something. Can you explain that? Is there a way we can make it just for James City County?
In the application for low-income tax credits, HUD encourages that residents on the local PHA, which would be those with James City County Housing Office, have priority for the vouchers.
Okay. I know when Mr. Henderson was doing the Candle Factory shops and houses, that's when he was trying to find people to fit into. But he said, he had talked to me several times, and he couldn't find that to fit into the community. Is there a difference? Am I not understanding something? He was having a hard time finding somebody that would fit in the, even though all the houses looked the same, these were more affordable than some of the others, like we do most of our communities. We have X amount of affordable housing. Is there a difference in what we're talking about here from what he was trying to do and what we're trying to do?
The apartments have a range in the amount of rent. So not everybody who, say, has a two-bedroom will necessarily be paying the same amount. So I think it's staggered rent. And my colleague, Mr. Denny, am I explaining this correctly, or is there additional information I should ask or answer? Or do you have additional information that you would want to share?
Was the Candle Factory a tax credit development? I didn't think it was.
Initially, I think they were asking for-
I thought it fell under our housing policy.
They were asking for tax credits.
Right. They were asking for tax credits.
They were asking for tax credits at the time. And so the tax credits, again, allow for apartments to be, have a range in the amount that you would pay, that people would pay based on income.
Okay. And we have 160 some?
We have 100. I'm sorry, which?
In James City County?
You're talking about vouchers?
Vouchers.
We have 154.
154 vouchers in James City County. So we have a limit of the amount of vouchers we're allowed, or how does that happen?
HUD allocates a particular number of vouchers to each jurisdiction. We happen to have 154. We're fairly on the smaller size, just based on the size of James City County. Larger communities have much larger numbers of vouchers available to them, like Virginia Beach has 10,000. I mean, it's a lot. So you can see the change. But we do have the ability, the Housing Office does have the ability to ask HUD to be awarded additional vouchers that we would have to offer to James City County residents and lease them up.
And how are we seeing the amounts working out? Are we about even with the amount needed? Or I know that's going to be-
I'll answer by saying that we currently have 369 people on the waiting list, on our Housing Choice Voucher waiting list. So that gives you an indication. We have the 154, and of those, you know, we have 142 leased up and then 11 people looking. So there's always a demand for housing. And yes.
Just to be, I'm sorry, you just-
Go ahead.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So we have a list of people, but we can't 100, it would be preferable if we could offer them to James City County residents, the vouchers, but there's no guarantee? Is that correct?
In the information that I have, in order to qualify, see if I can find it, for the low-income tax credit, people that are on the Housing Choice Voucher waiting list in the locality in which they're going to be located have priority for those vouchers.
In talking through that, Ms. Sadler, you know, I think for us, there's a high guarantee that our residents will have an opportunity for the other units. There are 36 units for the 31 units. I think there's a high probability our residents, particularly those on our list, on our housing list, would have an opportunity. As I understand the project-based vouchers, it is most likely to come from the locality, working with us to help prioritize. But there's no guarantee of prioritizing our residents. And so that is-
That's the part I'm confused about.
Yes, ma'am. And again, it is a pretty complex and rather confusing topic, and we've had a lot of conversation around it. But that's my understanding, that because of the tax credits, the units themselves, the 31 of the 36, our residents would get some prioritization of access to those units.
But the vouchers?
The voucher side, we may have access to, but I don't believe it would be a priority access. It is likely, I think, that it's somebody that maybe, say, lives in that community, works here, that likely would take that voucher. I think somebody living in another community wouldn't want to move away from where they are working. I think so it's likely you're having somebody working here, but it's not guaranteed.
Mr. Chairman, if I can help with Mr. Hippel's question on villages at Candle Station and some of the other ones that have been proffered, those were done pursuant to a proffer, and that is where someone had to go in and actually purchase the unit. And so, very different demographics, someone that wanted to outright purchase and own and fee a unit, these vouchers can be used for rental amounts. So, very different. And I will echo that. I think we've had some hard time finding people that want to do a lot of purchasing of the unit. So a lot of those proffers say that they have to offer them to James City County residents first. They go through our Housing Department. Those are the ones we hold soft seconds on, a number of different things, but very different unit type between rental and purchase.
Okay. Now, will all these, will these always remain rentals?
Yes, in the Powhatan Terrace, they will always remain rentals, yes.
And no one could come in and buy them and sub-rent it? It always has to be rented? I'm just checking to make sure. Because a lot of times, we have, you know, a house that fits a certain number that would allow a citizen to move in, but somebody may come in and buy it before the person actually really needs it and rent it. So I know these are rental units. I just want to make sure that that doesn't slip through the crack.
I'd like to answer that question. You can come up for it. This is Tony.
My name is Tony Peroso. I'm 147 Lakewood Drive, if that's what you need to know. I'm chairman of the Board of Directors of Housing Partnerships. Our executive director, Brandy Wheeler, cannot be here tonight. She's on vacation. So Powhatan Terrace is going to be a rental project. Individual units will not be offered for sale. It will have professional management. It will be operated as a rental complex, all 36 units. Explain if I go off track here. So my understanding of the process is, for these vouchers specifically that we're talking about, that to get these low-income housing tax credits, which are critical to funding this project, I mean, if we don't get these credits, the project can't go forward. HUD uses a scoring system. These vouchers are a critical component of that scoring system. My understanding also is that currently, James City County does not offer project-based vouchers. Their vouchers are actually tied to the tenant. So it's a tenant that gets the voucher, not the project. So we'd either have to change the county's management plan, which would be a more lengthy process, or there is a process in place that allows for these vouchers to be transferred between localities. And at the staff level, we have arranged with City of Hampton to transfer these vouchers, five, which will give us, we think, the scoring we need to get the tax credits moving forward. So that's kind of the nutshell of the process, as I understand it. Did I get that about right? So, entertain any other questions you might have.
My only other question is, if I remember correctly, when we were talking about these tax credits, is that it is a commitment, legal commitment, for a period of 30 to 35 years, I believe, that this has to remain this way. In other words, it's not something that, I mean, it's not in perpetuity necessarily, but it's a nice, long time period that it stays affordable under these tax credits. Is that a fair assessment?
Mr. Denny was telling me he thinks it's a 20-year commitment for the project.
Okay.
But it is a long term, not forever, but a long term.
Okay. So, you know, Housing Partnerships, as it plans to operate this complex, it aligns with our mission to support housing in James City County. And we fully expect that this will generate revenue for our organization, that we will then roll back into the community in accordance with our primary mission, which is repair of housing for those who need it.
Quick question, if I may. You said these vouchers are coming from Hampton. So is the City of Hampton expecting us to house Hampton's citizens because these vouchers are coming from Hampton? I'm just curious what everyone's expectations are.
That's not my understanding.
I'm just trying to figure out how this works. It's complicated.
Yeah, the way that it works, they generally, and I've talked to all of the managers from the different agencies, Chesapeake, Suffolk, Portsmouth, Newport News, and Hampton, they all have to operate from whatever their admin plan says. Just like our admin plan comes to the Board of Supervisors for approval, we have to adhere to that. Their admin plans stipulate that they will issue all of their, they will issue all of their vouchers to individuals coming from their waiting list first. What they have told me is, like Scott said, if they already live in James City County or they don't want to move to James City County, once they exhaust that, then they will go to the leasing agent, which in this case will be Bay aging, and they will ask them to make referrals from their waiting list. And as Ms. Watson said, and Scott as well, all of the remaining units, the 31, preference will go to the local housing agency. And we have 369 people on our waiting list, so we would send them a letter and ask them all to go apply, and they would get priority for those units.
Yeah, I'm concerned about the vouchers. If they're coming from Hampton, if we're getting five from Hampton, I'm just curious if Hampton is expecting Hampton residents be able to come and utilize them. That's, yes, they would be expecting that.
So Hampton residents would be first on the list?
On their waiting list.
And see if there's any in there. We could, with only five vouchers, have five people from Hampton. Not that I'm against anybody from Hampton moving up here. Anybody can move up here anytime they want. But I thought, and I know when we talked about this project several years back, we changed some zoning and changed some stuff and made sure we can get everything packed into this, and this should be what we need, and we shouldn't need anything else. And now we're needing vouchers to come forward for the project as well to make it successful, and I want it to be a successful project. But I want to be a successful project for the citizens of James City County. And that's a crutch that's kind of bothered me, that, okay, Hampton gets first say on their citizens. Well, we're building it here for James City County. And y'all, I know we want to promote housing for everywhere, but I got to take care of my backyard first and then go out from there. So, you know, and I want to see our citizens, you know, be able to utilize the vouchers. But it sounded like Hampton's first, and we're second. And with five, it doesn't sound like it would be very hard to get, you know, five people to move from Hampton up here. And I wouldn't blame them, because we've got a beautiful community here. I wouldn't blame one bit. So I'm not- I wouldn't blame one bit, so I'm not, you know, against anybody from Hampton moving up here. I just want something for our, those five would be applied to our citizens. Does that make sense?
It, it does, and I understand exactly what you're saying. The, the greatest value opportunity here for us is those 31 units. They are all below fair market rent. Some of them are even less than half a fair market rent, and our waiting list citizens who are all in the 50% of the area median income range have first shot at those units. We can tell them, here's an application, go apply, you get moved to the top, you get preference, because VHDA requires it as part of the tax credit application. So we have those 369 folks, and they should have first shot at those low rent units, income based rent units.
So if we don't have the five, we could lose the entire project. And so we lose 31 possibilities for James City County because of five.
Right.
Okay. Ms. Larson, I know you had a question or a comment.
Yes, I had a quick question. I had a question for the Chair of Housing Partnerships. I appreciate you being here this evening. And so I just want to reiterate what was just said. If I heard you correctly, without the, without us doing this this evening, this project will not go forward if, if there is a no vote this evening.
Yes, ma'am, that's our understanding. As you all know, construction costs have ridden considerably. You know, funding for this project is currently at risk. We think we can make it happen. But without the tax credits, we are pretty confident that we cannot make it happen. And so as, as Mr. Denny said, you know, we're looking at potentially, you know, 31 units prior to James City County, maybe five that would be prior to Hampton, but without this resolution being approved and us getting those tax credits, then there's, there's no, none. So I think that's the decision that the board has to make.
And in hearing your address this evening, you will be a nearby neighbor, so I, and as a member of that board, I'm sure that it is of utmost importance to you that this, that this neighborhood be a good neighbor to the neighborhoods that are around it and already established. I would think this would be a priority of the board.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And yes, my, my neighborhood is directly across the street from where this is going, so.
Okay. And thank you so much. And then just a quick question for staff. So how, what if somebody, do we have anybody from James City County that would have this type of voucher that say they have a job in Hampton? Or can, is there anything preventing them from going down and taking a that, not in this particular, I'm not talking about this particular project, I'm talking about a voucher? Can they take this same type of voucher that we're discussing, one of these five, and go live in another community?
With project-based vouchers, they are attached to the unit. And so unlike the vouchers that James City County currently administers, the voucher in the name, Housing Choice Voucher, you can take the voucher and you can move to any locality. With a housing choice, with a, with, excuse me, with a project-based voucher, it is a tied, it is tied to the unit. So you're not, you don't have the ability to take that project-based voucher and then go to another jurisdiction.
Right, but I'm, do we have any of the type of vouchers that can go with a tenant to another?
All, all of the vouchers that James City County has are, are portable, so they can go anywhere.
So there's a good chance that a voucher that we've issued is in another locality?
If, if they choose to move, they can do that, yes. Just as, you know, people can also move in from other jurisdictions that already have a Housing Choice Voucher.
Which, so that may be already happening now in our community?
That is, that is already happening now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So is Housing Choice Voucher and Project-Based Voucher?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Just trying to get it all straight.
Yeah, the project is, is attached to the unit and the project, and then the Housing Choice Voucher. You have the choice to use that voucher anywhere that you would like.
Thanks, that helps, thank you.
So if I can just ask a couple of quick, first of all, thank you very much for your service on, on this nonprofit board. I know that serving a leadership position like that is, is very challenging, and when you're undertaking development, something that your organization's not really had much experience with, it becomes additionally challenging. I, I guess I would just look for some reassurance from your perspective. Obviously, you can't provide an ironclad guarantee, but this project has been through a lot of iterations over, over the years, and do you feel like you're getting ready to actually move forward with the project?
We're getting close, we're getting close. We, you know, the last two hurdles are securing funding, which this decision tonight that you're going to make is going to be critical to getting us there, but we think that's over there. And then the last piece also that the county can help us with is our site, final site plan approval, which is in county, been back and forth a couple of times, getting final site approval. And once we have that and we secure funding, we think we're ready to put the first shovel on the ground pretty soon, so.
And, and I just want to reiterate that, just the idea that while we don't have an ironclad guarantee that James City County residents would rise up in Hampton or Newport News, which might have these, these vouchers, this one, I guess, is Newport News, is that right?
This was Hampton.
This is Hampton, this is Hampton. We do have a lot of residents of Hampton and Newport News who commute two jobs in James City County. And one benefit of having a small number of these vouchers available to those residences is that we might be able to take some traffic off the road and make quality of life a little bit better for folks who are already contributing to the community. So I certainly think that makes good sense. I, I will still want to make an amendment at the appropriate time, but with that, any other questions? I'm going to go ahead and.
John, could I, could you make your amendment, and then can I move the motion?
Sure, sure, I'm going to, I just opened the public hearing. I don't think we have any cards, so I'm going to close the public hearing. And now I'll make my, my amendment asking that we simply add a sentence to the resolution indicating that no more than five such vouchers shall be available in this project. And I ask for a vote on that motion. Any, any discussion? None? Mr. Stevens, just call the roll, please.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
For Sterling Nichols, aye.
Ms. Sadler?
This is just.
Just the amendment.
The amendment, aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye. Okay, the amendment passes. And so now do I have a motion to adopt the resolution as amended?
Did you ask for a motion? I'm sorry.
Yes, it did.
I moved the motion.
We have a motion to approve. Any discussion?
Yes. The, and I would hate to lose the 31 because of five. I would like to have 36, the five vouchers be all James City County, and that's the county I support. And I know that, you know, we don't have any, so we have to reach out and, and do this. So I don't want the, the project to fall apart and lose 31 possible potential rentals and home sites for people because of five. But if there's any way in the future, we can do it all in James City County so that it's all here, and we make sure that, you know, our county gets first pick. And like I said, I have nothing against anyone moving into James City County, coming, people that are working here from Hampton, Newport News, or anything else. I just always support James City County and, and want to see everything we can in James City County. So that's the only comment I have on that. I hate to lose 31 because of five.
Yeah, I just, I just did want to comment that I was a no vote last year on this, only because, and I think it's an admirable project. My concern has always been the lack of proper school funding, which is the only reason that I, I voted against it previously. So I just, again, it's, I think it's an admirable project, but I'm very concerned about the, the lack of proper school funding. So I'll just leave it at that for now.
We're ready to go ahead with the vote, then. Mr. Stevens, call the roll, please.
Ms. Sadler?
Because of my statement, I'm still a no, thank you.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have a resolution for Blaine Landing Development. Ms. Watson?
Blaine Landing Apartments LLC, a Virginia limited liability company, is planning to construct a low-income housing development at 7581 Richmond Road in James City County with 19 units to be known as Blaine Landing. As part of the application to receive tax credits, Blaine Landing has proposed to accept six project-based vouchers to reduce the housing cost burden on qualified households from the Newport News Redevelopment and Housing Authority. And talking with the developer and based on new information, the staff recommends, due to the change in the original resolution, that no action be taken. Can I entertain questions?
Many, how many units were approved in that entire development? Because I know there were, there were varying different levels of AMI and, but I thought it was.
A total of 119.
Okay, and only 19 of them are under the vouchers?
It would be six.
I'm sorry?
Six.
I mean, okay, but you, you said 19 units.
119 units total.
Okay, that was my mistake. I thought you said just 19.
No, no, no. 119 units and six.
Now, now I am clear.
Okay.
I just said, what happened to the rest of them? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Much of the same material applies. All right, so I will go ahead and open the public hearing, and. Geddy?
Chairman, members of the board, I'm Vernon Geddy, 1177 Jamestown Road, here on behalf of Blaine Landing. Also here is Mr. Tom Johnson, one of the principals of Blaine Landing. There's a significant difference in this case from the one you just heard in that Blaine Landing's financing has been approved and they have their credits. A part of that, they obligated themselves to ask for approval for these project-based vouchers, and thus we are here tonight. But the project will move forward in any event. Now, the discussions you all have had, we can shed some practical light on in that Mr. Johnson's organization has experience with this very issue. They have a low-income housing project in Gloucester that has project-based vouchers from Hampton. And what they have found is it is not people who live and work in Hampton that apply for these, it's people who might live in Hampton now but work in Gloucester. And I think the same would be true here. Somebody working in James City County would want to be on the list for a project-based voucher here, not somebody working in Newport News, living in western James City County. The other thing they see is people who come to the project, like any other tenant, and if they, they will work with them and determine if it looks like they're qualified, and they can refer them to Newport News and get them on the list. So here, with their six proposed vouchers out of 119 units, what our main request tonight, I mean, obviously, we would like you to approve the vouchers, but we would like you to act one way or the other. It's important for them to be able to go back to the HDA and say, yeah, we've fulfilled our commitment, we asked, and either we have them or the county declined. So we would ask you to take action tonight, if you would.
Any questions for Mr. Geddy?
We'd be glad to answer any questions, if we can add anything else to the discussion.
Thanks, member.
Thank you.
All right, any other, we have no speaker cards, right? Close the public hearing? And ask the board if, if anybody wishes to, to make a motion.
Make a motion for denial?
Motion for denial. And we'll go ahead and roll in.
Sir, Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Nay.
Motion carries.
Okay, that concludes our public hearings, and we'll now go on to the question of board requests and directives.
I get to go first?
Sure.
I did want to say that since the last meeting, I, I did attend the Will Barnes picnic. It was very well attended. I only got to spend a little bit of time there, but I want to thank Peg Borman for the fine job that the Clean County Commission does with that every year. It was a very, very enjoyable event. On June 30th, I went with Chairman McGlinnan up to the High Growth Coalition meeting. I'll let him discuss the details of that, but it was, I found it a very, very interesting meeting where we did discuss some affordable housing aspects, so really a very productive day. And this past Saturday, right before the bottom fell out with the rain, I attended the Brookhaven Founder's Day, Brookhaven Neighborhood, right over behind the courthouse, along old Ironbound Road. Very nice little brochure that they have, and I was very pleased to be invited. And I will say that they, they told us a lot about the history of that community that I had never known before, and I was really, very, really impressed with the, the project. And then I found out today that several of our, one of our staff members, Teresa, lives in that community as well. I had no idea she lived there. But, but that was, that was very enjoyable, and I will, I will give the board an update on, a little bit on the history of that community when I get the final details, because they, they had a very nice presentation there. Spent some time, pardon me, spent some time with Chairman McGlinnan on July the 11th, yesterday, down at Grove Christian Outreach, having a slurpee and talking to them about their, their program, and I was very impressed with the operation they were running there. But I'll let John talk a little bit more about that, since this is his district. The last thing I wanted to mention was that yesterday I lost a very dear friend. Virginia Wirtman, who was Ford's Colony neighbor, personal friend, and a real advocate for the community, passed away late yesterday afternoon from lung cancer. She was only 74, and she survived by her husband, Dr. Stan Boulding. And I will say that Jenny had worked very hard, very diligently on the comp plan and the Citizen Participation Committee, and she was one of the driving forces behind the Workforce Housing Task Force. So those were her passions, and I know she served on the Board of Directors of the Housing Partnerships. She was a member of local NAACP, and she had a BA in economics from Duke and a long career in technology and data services with, finishing with 20 years at the International Monetary Fund. We're going to miss her. We're really going to miss her, and it's a tremendous loss for the community, for Ford's Colony, for the Jamestown District, and for James City County as a whole. And everyone to keep family. Thank you.
All right, went to a couple of 4th July celebrations, and, and seems like community is, is very engaged in 4th July, and always loves that very much. Attended HR Tech Meeting, and also met with the county administrator on projects on I-64 and our support to move I-64 all the way through, but we're looking to, you know, there's a push and pull, where do we start from? We're pushing to, we start in James City County and move that way. And so since everything has been going that way, we felt that James City County should be the first. We think we've got all the funding in place for it. We need a few little back funding and that sort of thing to, to finish it out, but very productive meeting, and I look forward to seeing that project start within the next couple of years, so.
Where would it start?
We're pushing for James City County.
Yeah, but where?
Right where it ended, right past Lightfoot.
All right, and you're going to keep it on?
Keep on, it's going all the way up to 95.
Howling.
Yeah, so it'll be a nice extension for, for all of us.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. One of our very engaged community members and a constituent of the Stonehouse District. Mr. Jay Everson, lost his grandson last week, and who was also a James City County citizen. And I did attend a very moving service in which Jay spoke. But I would like to publicly offer my deepest sympathies to Jay and his wife Nancy and their extended family. Their grandson lived with them and obviously very close, so our thoughts and prayers go out to Jay and his family. That's all.
Ms. Larson?
Yes, thank you very much. Just a couple of things. One, I just want to thank staff for their help, especially in BDOT Matters, and thank BDOT as well. We've had different issues going on concerning some bike path debris. We've been, you know, where we have the no left turn off of Route 5, we needed some repair done. We've had some sinkholes, and staff has been helping. I appreciate Mr. Carroll and his staff. He's underfunded, understaffed. We still have some huge issues going on, especially in the Fernbrook neighborhood that I hope that BDOT will be able to address in some manner. But I, I do want to thank our Stormwater Division as well. They've been out there with me on several things, and I'm just appreciative of everyone's efforts. I also hope soon that we'll be bringing you a discussion item regarding the changes that have been made on Route 5 for the Green Springs and the Centerville intersections. They've now concluded their speed study and their accident study there, so I hope that that's something that we can talk about in the near future. And then the other item, I have two more. One, we want to thank Station 5. We had an ambulance and a fire truck that came out for the Greater First Colony Fourth of July Parade. And I know that our first responders are asked to go out to Fourth of July parades a lot in our community, and if they're able to, they do, as long as they don't have a call. And it just, you know, people just love it, and they're so great about letting kids climb over the equipment and talk to the kids so they are not intimidated. They know something about if these rescue vehicles have to come to their homes. And so I just want to say thank you. And the other item is that next Tuesday at 1:00 at the Embassy Suites over off of bypass will be our Tourism Council meeting. Just a reminder, these are open meetings. Not only that, all of our meeting material is on the Visit Williamsburg website. You can go in, see our budget, see where the marketing dollars are going. But we welcome anyone to attend the meeting. We have public comment. So just want to remind everybody that that meeting is next Tuesday. And I would just want to thank my colleagues for allowing me to come in remotely this evening. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Larson, and we're glad you were able to join us electronically tonight. I have a couple of items that, some of which will just amplify on some points others have made. First of all, though, I did want to mention that we had, we got some very good coverage on CBS News last week of the dire situation facing Jamestown Island. And while you never like to feel your community is providing bad news, it's very important for the nation at large to understand the circumstances confronting Jamestown Island as they embark on a $30 million fundraising campaign to, to save the island. So hopefully that coverage will be helpful in that regard. As Mr. Eisenhour indicated, we were both at Grove Christian Outreach Center yesterday for their slurpees with the senator event. I thought it could have been slurpees with supervisors, since we outnumbered the senators two to one. But it was a great event, and I had a terrific opportunity to have a conversation with several constituents about issues that they are interested in and to hear a little bit about the excitement that's building in the community toward the construction of a new park in Grove. I'd also like to mention the fact that next Wednesday, they will be partnering with Habitat for Humanity and Restore in an event that they're calling Slay Hunger, Christmas in July, where people can make donations to the Grove Christian Outreach Center and Habitat of Food Supplies on Wednesday up next week. And they would very much appreciate support for that worthy cause. Wanted to mention, as Mr. Eisenhour suggested, that we did have an event on June 30th of the Coalition of High-Growth Communities, of which we are, we are a founding member and have played some kind of role in its existence over the years. And we had a great attendance of, in excess of 60 people, representing more than a dozen jurisdictions present. We got to hear from Zach Mannheimer, who was the architect of our 3D-printed house in Forest Heights. We got to hear from the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Commission on their study of affordable housing in Virginia. The whole conference was organized around the concept of affordable housing for high-growth communities, and we got, we had a wonderful panel discussion that included our own Vaughn Pollard doing a presentation on local governments' challenges in addressing affordable housing, something we've been talking about this evening. And I will be circulating to other members of the board and to other localities the materials from that meeting, so you'll have a chance to see what we talked about and how that organization is prospering at the moment. Add to the fact that, as Jim Eisenhour indicated, we really lost a great person in Virginia Wirtman, who passed away this, earlier this week. I was fortunate to be able to deliver to her on June 29th proclamation citing her for her excellent service to the county on the citizens' participation team of our last comprehensive plan and on the Affordable Housing Task Force Committee. Jenny's passing is a great loss to the community, and I was pleased that I was able to have a conversation with her. Her mind was as sharp as ever. Her body, obviously, had undergone tremendous weakening, and I just wish Stan and her family well. And finally, it was a great honor for me to be able to attend on the Saturday of Juneteenth weekend, an event sponsored by the Williamsburg Men's Club, an organization of African-American leaders in the community, where they really did something extraordinary. They, they had histories written up by members of the community and the, and the Williamsburg Men's Club, recognizing the leadership of previous important people in the community. And I was very honored to be asked to accept this particular proclamation and materials from them, recognizing the significance of John Tack Roberts. John Tack Roberts is the namesake for the Roberts District. He was born a slave, yet rose to be a magistrate in Virginia, at a time when magistrates actually heard cases. And so he could be seen as the first African-American judge in Hampton Roads. He was a great leader in the community and more, and so they tasked me with finding the appropriate location in the county to display this, which I will certainly work to do. And at the same time, they also really took the effort to recognize the important role played by African-American men in James City County over the years to heart. And I think it was quite important for this generation to be recognizing previous generations of leaders and to recognize that there are very big shoes to fill, but they can fill them. And that, I think, was, was an extraordinary event. I appreciated very much the chance to be there for it. With that, I'll turn it over to the county administrator for his report.
Nothing to share this evening?
Nothing at all.
Nothing this evening. Summertime. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right, then I would bring us into recess, I guess, for the purpose of calling together the Service Authority.
I call this meeting James City County Service Authority Board of Directors, regular meeting, called order. Mr. Powell, would you call and roll, please?
Mr. Eisenhour? Here.
Ms. Sadler?
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Here.
Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Chairman, I've moved that Ms. Larson be allowed to participate electronically.
Thank you. All right, roll call, please, sir.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and I would ask that Mr. Hippel is the vice chair of JCSA, please run the meeting for this evening. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. All right. I see no presentations. Do we have any public comments?
No, sir.
All right, we'll move on to the consent counter.
Motion to adopt.
Motion for approval. All in favor, signal I say no.
Aye.
Aye.
As carry, public hearing. Yes, sir. I want a general manager's authorization to convey James City County Service Authority easements, investments, and property equal or less than one-half of an acre. Mr. Powell?
The James City Service Authority routinely accepts easements from other parties to facilitate the installation of utilities. Occasionally, development plans change, and the easements that we've granted are no longer, are no longer necessary. In those instances, it's in the Service Authority's best interest to abandon those easements back to the original owner. The current policy is for the board to consider those easement abandonments after a public hearing. This resolution would give the general manager the authority to approve any easement abandonment up to half an acre, just in order to make the process more expeditious. These easements rarely have any significant value, and this is just, as I said, an initiative to try to expedite that process. So staff recommends approval.
Any questions, Mr. Powell?
How many cases would you say that, that we deal with?
It's a, I would say, two or three a year is probably what we average. And the vast majority of them are under half an acre.
All right, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And I mean, speaker cards?
Yes, sir.
I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and look for the board. Direction or motion?
Move approval.
Move approval. Mr. Powell, would you call and roll, please?
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
All right, board considerations. Formal acceptance of the water and sewer system fiscal year 2022. Mr. Powell?
This is simply the annual resolution where the board formally accepts all the, all the utilities that have been dedicated to us for the past year. Staff recommends approval.
Any questions for staff? All right, look for a motion.
Motion.
I'll move the motion.
Thank you. Mr. Powell, roll.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
All right, next is a closed session. Do we want to go into closed session? And, and John, do you want to follow us?
Yep.
We'll joint that together? Okay, look for consideration of personnel matter, performance evaluation of general manager pursuant to Section 2.2-311A1 of the Code of Virginia. Go ahead, motion?
Motion.
Motion. All right, Mr. Powell, would you call and roll?
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
All right, we're in closed session.
Call us back into session for the board supervisors and ask for a motion to go into closed session under, for consideration of personnel matter, the performance evaluation of the, of, excuse me, performance evaluation of the county administrator and the county attorney pursuant to Section 2.23711A1 of the Code of Virginia, and consideration of personnel matter, the appointment of individuals to county boards and commissions pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, specifically appointment to the Economic Development Authority.
Motion.
I'll move.
Mrs. Stevens, you call the roll, please?
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We are in closed session.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Ms. Drysonhour.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
All right, board requests and directives? Any? All right, we'll move on. General manager's update.
I did want to just speak for a minute about the dashboard that you received this morning, since that is the, represents the end of June, the end of, and the end of the fiscal year. I did want to just note that we do have an accrual period for the service authority because of the way we bill.
Right.
We haven't necessarily received funds for the service we provided or the water that we, we sold in, in June. But if you look at the numbers based on the historical trends of the accrual period, we should be meeting our, our revenue projections on the water fund. We may be slightly below, but if we are below on our water revenues, it will be more than offset by how much we will exceed on the sewer revenues. So, operating revenues in the big picture are good, and the tap fees are the same way. We are just a few dollars short of what we projected on water tap fees, but we are over on the sewer tap fees. So, I just wanted to note that, and that the bottom line, obviously, these are unaudited figures, but, you know, based, based on the, on the reports, the projections, financial projections for the year end look like they're solid.
All right.
And that's all I've got.
Thank you. Okay, I'm looking for an adjournment to July 26.
Move to adjourn to 1:00 p.m. on July 26, 2022.
Thank you. Roll call.
Ms. Drysonhour.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Okay. Hey. Colleague, James City County Board of Supervisors back into order, and can I have a motion to certify the closed meeting?
I certified the book about those matters that we said we would.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Please call roll. Ms. Stevens.
Ms. Drysonhour.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Who cares?
We have one appointment to make this evening.
I'll go ahead and make it if you want.
That's fine.
Okay. The appointment would be to appoint Rebecca Mulvane to the Economic Development Authority, effective July, I guess today, July 1, 2022, expire June 30, 2026.
Roll call please.
Ms. Drysonhour.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion for adjournment until 1:00 p.m. on July 22, or July 26, 2022.
Roll call please.
Ms. Drysonhour.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Okay. Meeting adjourned.